Call a meeting to order. Welcome you all to the Water Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, January 5th, 2016. Now that we're ready, I'll invite you all to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just so the board's aware of the microphones we have in front of us, these microphones that are set on the table are for sound to get to the room, the smaller ones are for XC-TV. If anyone from the audience is going to speak, we'll ask that you come to the audience in front, to the microphone in front of us. Do we have any announcements from the board? Mr. Patterson?
I have a proclamation. Whereas Michael B. Wheeler of Boy Scout Troop 38 has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And Michael Wheeler met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and Falmouth. And the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor toward its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas Michael B. Wheeler is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege, now therefore we, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Mary Pat Flynn, Rebecca Moffett, and Samuel Patterson, as Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Saturday, January 9th, 2016, as Michael B. Wheeler Day. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Patterson, do you think you might be able to be there at the ...
I'd be happy to do that.
If you could present the proclamation.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right, now time for public comment. If you'd like to speak on something that's not on our agenda this evening, please limit your talks to two minutes and please refrain from referring to anyone by name. Is there anyone who'd like to make public comment? If not, all right, we have some minutes on the meetings from December 21st, 2015, for approval. Any changes, additions? Mr. Patterson?
Yes. On page four, I think we have a name incorrectly spelled. It would be the, if you look at the public hearing subtitle at the bottom and go up to the second paragraph above that, it should say Admiral Devaney or Devaney, and not ...
Instead of Dufrane.
Instead of Admiral Dufrane, yes.
He'd probably like that, though.
The title, at least.
Okay, any other changes besides correcting Admiral Devaney's name?
Move approval with that correction?
Second.
Motion, a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None in the eyes of it. All right, our business part of this evening is to hear a presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2017 budget. And I believe we're, Mr. Suss, are you going to introduce us, or are we going to have Ms. Petit?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's our great pleasure, as dictated by the Falmouth Town Charter, to bring forward to you the proposed FY '17 budget. The board has received, as per practice, a copy of my 2017 budget message submitted to the Board of Selectmen prior to this meeting for a summary of the contents of these large green notebooks. As the board's aware, our operating budget as proposed for FY '17 is in the $125 million range, and we're pleased to confirm that once again the town subject to this board's concurrence, the Finance Committee's overview and assessment, and ultimately town meetings vote, the town is once again living within our means in terms of revenues available to us and maintaining all basic municipal services for which we're quite proud and the citizens are well-deserved. That having been said, we have a PowerPoint summary prepared, to be prepared and presented by our Finance Director, Jennifer Petit, and I would defer to Jennifer for her summary. Jennifer? Well, Mr. Chairman, while Jennifer's getting ready, I do want to also acknowledge and thank our colleagues, department heads, and related staff members from throughout the town representing all the activities undertaken in service to taxpayers of this community. And I appreciate very much their joining us here this evening, also distinguished members of the Finance Committee and other boards and commissions as well. We welcome them all, and we, I want to thank, thank you, on my behalf and that of the Board of Selectmen, for being here to answer any questions which may arise. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure my microphone was working. I'm all wired up here. I feel like I'm in a reality TV show with all of it, so, and this is reality, believe it or not, so, this will be good. I'm wondering if the board might want to maybe separate a little bit, if they want to look at, I know that you have hard copies of the PowerPoint, but you might want to follow along this way, it might be a little bit easier. So I'm just going to go for, you know, an overview. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, and just some opening comments regarding the FY 2017 budget. This was definitely, this was a challenging year. You know, we have, you know, the new trash contract that we've had to incorporate into the budget, we've had, you know, 2% COLAs, and, you know, normal, if you will, increases in retirement and health insurance. So it was really, it was a little bit challenging, but, you know, I'm excited to present this budget. It's a balanced budget, and, you know, it still provides, you know, the wonderful services that Falmouth has to offer. So, I know everyone must be sick of me saying this, but with the operating budget, reoccurring revenues fund reoccurring expenses, and that is really what this is. You know, sometimes we will put some capital items into the budget because we're paying those, we're buying those capital items every single year. Now, saying that, we can't fit all the reoccurring capital items in the budget, so we try to, you know, make that work, if you will. And it's, you know, our reoccurring revenues, it's really four major revenues, and it's our property taxes, state aid, our estimated local receipts, and other available funds, which is money that we're, that has come in and that we transfer in to support the budget, and I'll go over that. And one-time revenues fund one-time expenses, and that's really our free cash and our reserves. You see more of that usually in the November town meeting. You do see some overlap, but a good way to look at it is, you know, in April when we have our annual, we have our operating budget, which is the reoccurring revenues, and in November, it's capital one-time. So our property taxes, every year, you know, the Board of Selectmen votes a policy in October for the next fiscal year, and it has been, you know, we do maximize our 2.5% levy capacity. That's really all the new revenue growth that we do have, and we do estimate new growth. And we've been estimating it for about $600,000 for the last few years. It is an average, it has been coming in a little bit higher than that, but we really need to be conservative with our revenue estimates, because we want to make sure that, you know, we don't exceed those, that creates issues with going back to town meeting and making cuts after the fact. So we really like to be conservative with our revenue estimates. And then this year, you'll hear me talk a little bit more about utilizing our debt drop-off capacity, and, you know, we've been talking about that with capital projects, but the principal and interest is incorporated into your operating budget. And so, we have two major capital projects, and that's the, this Little Pond Source Service Area and the water treatment plant. And both of them were, have, we have funding from the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust. And really, and I, I've talked a little bit about this before, I do have, you know, we have a financing plan that's been presented, the board has, you know, looked at it, and when the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust, when we're funding it through them, it really kind of took away some of the flexibility that we would have if we were going to borrow on our own, and we've been borrowing short-term through them. And so since these projects are moving forward really at a rapid pace, and they are going wonderfully, I know that you get updates, you know, once a month, we will have principal and interest due on approximately $31.5 million in FY '17, and that is incorporated into the operating budget. Our debt drop-off is about $2.6 million. So just to go over it again, is, you know, our debt, in order to keep our tax levies steady, we have our exempt debt, and we always want to pay the same amount every year. If it drops off, you know, the ta, you know, the levy goes down, but then if you're incorporating new projects, then it will spike up the next year, so we always want to pay the same amount every year. And I have a chart that shows that. So in FY '17, we have a debt drop-off of about $2.6 million. $2 million of principal and interest will go to that $31.5 million, will be bonded over 20 years. It'll be 20 years for the water treatment plant, 30 years for the Little Pond Source Service Area. And so that gives us a little bit of a capacity of about $600,000 that will pay down some short-term debt. Right now, a lot of, I came in front of the board in the beginning of December, and we borrowed short-term, and it was mostly for the wastewater project, so that will pay down some of that wastewater money. Estimated local receipts, in the Board of Selectmen's budget policy, we do keep this level every year. And so what does that encompass? The estimated local receipts are your motor vehicle excise, your hotel motel and meals, and part of the budget policy is to take a portion of that and store that money into the reserve, which is their general stabilization, and also the capital stabilization fund, and some of that money goes into your OPEB trust fund, which is part of the operating budget. Reoccurring revenues, we do have a reoccurring revenue source to fund these reserves, which is, really puts us in a good financial light. Departmental revenue, we have our water and SOAR, beach licenses and permits, ambulance and other. You will see this year, there is an increase in water and SOAR, and that's to support some of the budget increases in water and SOAR because of the new projects coming online, like the expans, expansion of the wastewater treatment facility. We do have a new position in the budget, and that will be supported by additional SOAR revenue. And then we do have some increases in the water department budget, which will be supported by water revenue. I've discussed this before, it was in the November town meeting, there is $30,000 appropriated to update the water and SOAR study, and we're in the process of doing that right now, and so we will be coming back to you for a recommendation on an increase in water and SOAR rates. And that's all been a part of the financing plan from the beginning. So the FY 2017 balanced budget is, projection is on $18.25 million in estimated local receipts, usually around $18 million. And like I just discussed, it was the additional water and SOAR revenue to offset a budget increase for the two major projects, and the operating expenses that are happening because of that, and also some additional departmental revenue to offset a budget increase for hi, the hiring of a firefighter. So what also is in this budget is an additional firefighter's position that will be hired January 1st, a year from now, so you have a half a year in there, and we would look at departmental receipts as, you know, maybe particularly an increase in ambulance revenues. I know that we look at that every year, we do have some capacity there. Now, our other available funds, these are monies that come in, that we have segregated in separate accounts, that we transfer in to support the operating budget. We have parking meter that supports some of the operation expenses in the police department. We've been doing this for a number of years, nothing really new here. Embarkation fees supports public safety of fire and police. The wetlands and waterways supports some of the conscom, and some of the debt. A lot of this is supporting the debt from the MES department. Energy receipts, you know, the money that we receive from N-Star and, you know, the operation of the turbines, and that supports the debt service. Our golf revenues supports our debt service for golf. Community preservation, our debt service for community preservation, the monies that they bring in supports the debt service in the general fund. Debt service, it's all general obligation bonds that need to be into, in the general fund, and so that's why you're transferring this money, and you're not just spending it out of that account. And bond premiums, there is an increase, and it's due to the short-term borrowing that I came before you in the beginning of December, we have a large bond premium, larger than normal, that will offset the interest cost on that short-term debt that's incorporated into the budget. State aid, it's really nothing new in state aid, it's still early. The governor will, you know, address his budget, I think at the end of January, he will be speaking at MMA this year, which he normally does, and lets everybody know. Usually if they have a tough budget year, then they'll start looking at local aid, but there isn't any signs right now. I know they are talking about the ta, the state tax rate is, has been decreasing over the last couple of years, and so they are looking at less, you know, state revenue, but there hasn't been really any discussions of hitting local aid. I don't think they're in, they're not in trouble to hit local aid. So we will level fund it, we won't cut it, but we won't take any increases either. And state aid, really, you have your Chapter 70, your unrestricted government aid, which is really your lottery, and then you have some reimbursements, your school choice, that gets directly put into a separate account for use of the school department. You have charter school, we actually get money in from charter school, but we also have assessments going out, veterans benefits, and property tax exemptions. Now, this year, we have seen an increase in veterans benefits, but we do get reimbursed 70% from the state, so I did, you would, you will see an increase in the veterans benefits because it is a reimbursement to offset some of that expense, because we wanted to budget it appropriately, because there really is a need in that department. So this is really what it looks like of your sources of revenue. You know, 75% is your property tax, state aid is 7.8, your local receipts 14.2, and then your other available funds is about 3%. So that's the revenue that supports the operating budget. And this is your operating budget. I kind of break it down, you know, by general government, public safety, into the different functions that we do have, and this is really, and this is just, you know, your operating budget as you see it in your book. You know, I'll always point out education, that is the school department and the upper Cape Cod tech, and it's 38.2%, but all the health insurance is in the town side, and it's under your insurance and reserve and employee benefits. So I just always like to point that out. There's a lot that's budgeted for the school department, they have a lot of separate accounts, grants, that you would not see here, that support their operations. So your appropriations, you have your operating budget, the debt is within the debt drop-off window. For a share, principal interest is on $31.5 million, will pay off $600,000 on short-term debt. I do want to mention, too, in the '18 budget, you will see an additional probably $40 million, maybe $45 million incorporated into the budget. We will have bonded $78 million of those two projects by FY '18. And, and then you'll see, too, because of the fluctuation back in November, we voted $1.5 million to be put into a debt stabilization fund, so in '18, we might need to, we don't need to do it in '17, but in '18 and '19, because we don't have a huge debt drop-off, we might need to be able to use those funds in order to offset that levy increase. You have your education, health insurance. Health insurance, there is, looks, you know, like a rather large increase this year, they were looking at, at first you heard 12%, now they're talking maybe 10%. They don't meet until the end of January, and then they set the rates. Now lately, in the last few years, since I've started working here, we've really been budgeting more of like the gross rate increase. So usually what you'll hear from the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, and this is just an example, that we're looking at rates, you know, they're going to increase 10%, but we're going to use some of our fund balance to artificially reduce those rates, so really the increase will be seven. And we've been trying to fund that at 10% for years like this. So if there was a 10% or a 12% increase, we'd be able to deal with it, because we have enough in the, in the budget to do that. So I put a six and a half increase, and if it is 10%, we'll be able to deal with that. That's another reason we were able to deal with the snow and ice deficit last year, that one-time transfer to snow and ice. We're one of the few communities that didn't have to amortize $1.5 million over three years. We were able to take care of that snow and ice deficit and still have a healthy free cash. The retirement, not last year, but the year before, the retirement board did vote a new retirement schedule, and they took the unfunded liability. We were going to be fully funded maybe by 20, I think it was 2038, and we brought it back to 2032. So that's about a 5% increase every year, and so that's incorporated into your operating budget. And then you'll see, you know, a little bit of an increase for the workers' comp and property liability like you would every year. Contractual salary increases, not all union contracts have been settled for 2017, but there have been some that have been, and it's a 2% cost of living increase, and you will see a separate, separate article this year, like you did last year, I believe it's about $150,000, but the rest of the 2% is incorporated into the salaries and the budgets. And so that's, you know, this is what is planned and anticipated, and it's consistent with the established wage patent. You know, your budget increases for 2017, the trash and recycling contract, that was, you know, when we look at additional revenue every year, you have about $2 million from your levy, and you have about $600,000 from new growth, so that's $2.6 million to take care of these increases. The trash and recycling contract was about $600,000, so we needed to incorporate that. That, that was an increase. Your staff and operating expense increases were due to the new water treatment plant and the wastewater, but we were able, you know, we'll look at the study that's being done, and we're going to increase those, well, hopefully, the board will choose to maybe increase those rates so we can bring some of that revenue, and I don't want to say that it's definitely going to happen, but we do have enough room in there that I'm comfortable putting it into the budget now, even though the, you know, it hasn't been voted. There is enough room in there. And looking at hiring an additional firefighter effective January 1st, 2017, and also, which is a new initiative, which is on the next slide, is the funding to contribute to the annual community fireworks event, and there's about $15,000 in there for that. So the new initiatives that you will see in this budget is your consolidated communications department. So there is a separate tab for your consolidated communications department, the budget. We moved some budgeted expenses from police and fire for the dispatchers into this budget, and we used the matrix report, because they had done an extensive study on what the operating expenses would be. So really, when you look at the consolidated communications department, the salary is in there for the full year, because we didn't want to split the salaries, it kind of gets messy when you're, you know, paying your payroll, some out of this account, some out of that account, so the full dispatch salaries are in that budget. But we budgeted for eight months or nine months of operating expenses in, in that budget, because we're looking, you know, we want to be ready July 1st, but it might not be feasible till it's actually up and running until October 1st. So that's kind of how the budget, and it's being incorporated and pulling from different places, so, you know, you know, we definitely feel comfortable this budget will work with that consolidated communications department. Summer patrol, that's another new initiative, to have a summer patrol up at Falmouth Heights, and again, the funding for the annual community fireworks event. So funding reserves, you know, sometimes, I hate to talk about other communities, but a lot of times, you know, when you see other communities, if they have a high free cash one year, or, you know, they receive some revenue, they will, you know, go to town meeting and just put a boost into the reserves, which is great. But Falmouth, for the last few years, has been, has really targeted their reoccurring revenue in your budget policy to fund your reserves, and that really shows financial stability, you know, that we have these reserves put aside. So out of the reoccurring revenue, we have over a million every year that's been allocated to capital stabilization. We continue to fund the general stabilization fund at about $440,000, we level fund that every year, and we're continuing to fund OPEB at about $100,000 a year. And I'll talk a little bit about the OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefits. Now, we have that on our financial statements, I, a new actuarial study just came out, and really what that is, is that if everybody retired today in the Town of Falmouth, what will we be paying for health insurance? You know, what is our liability? So that's not going to happen, but we have to put the liability in our financial statements. The same thing with Gatsby 34 years back, when we were putting our fixed assets, because we're not going to sell our fixed assets or liquidate them in order to support operations. But we do, you know, over the years, they want us, Gatsby, the Government Accounting Standards Board, really wants us to kind of have our financials more like a business, so we do report the OPEB liability and the retirement liability on our financial statements. There is not a requirement right now to fund the OPEB liability, although the last study was about $88 million in liability that the Town of Falmouth has, but a lot of other communities are funding it, and so we have to make some sort of effort to fund it and incorporate it and have a plan. And a lot of times, you know, with bond rating agencies, they want to know what your plan is to fund this. And so we put 100, it might not be a lot of money, but we are putting $100,000 into OPEB, and we will continue to do that, because we are showing that we're funding it every year. And we still continue to fund the Workers' Compensation Trust Fund, and we'll fund that this year in the amount of $100,000. So when you look in your budget books, you know, I have the spreadsheet every year, and it really details, it has, you know, your expenses by function, and then it really details the revenue estimates, how I calculate 2.5% levy capacity, your estimated revenues, and how it balances out the expenses. Now, there are appropriations that don't get voted by town meeting. We don't bring them to town meeting to vote, and really what they are is the state assessments. And part of the state assessments is, you know, school choice, charter school, Cape Cod Commission, which actually is over, over Proposition 2.5, that's an exclusion that we put on our tax rate every year. So I have to account for that, so you don't see it in the book, but you'll see it in the spreadsheet. And also our allowance for abatements. Usually, I've been estimating about $600,000. We don't usually abate that much at all. We usually have excess that we release every year, that the Board of Assessors releases, and it really kind of flows into your free cash. So I took that down a little bit, from $600,000 to $550,000, which gives still us plenty of room in order to balance the budget, because it was tight in certain areas, and, you know, and look at the state assessments, and I put a 2.5 increase in there. You never really know what that's going to be, you know, usually until, you know, June, but we have enough room that if it went up or down, we'd be able to take care of it. So in conclusion, you know, we've taken care of the fixed cost increases. One thing I did want to mention is people ask about utility costs. We are in a two-year contract for electricity, so we're good there, we didn't have to really put anything aside for that. And also the ESCO project has been giving us some savings, so really isn't a lot of pressure there. This budget, you know, allows for flexibility. I always talk about flexibility, because you never know what, you know, might come up, and you want to be able to be flexible to deal with issues that, that come up and don't create, you know, a huge problem. And this budget definitely still allows for flexibility, even though it's tight. We continue implementation of further exploration of departmental reorganization and cost-saving measures. You know, consolidated communications, you know, again, I'll say the finance department, but that happened, you know, right when I came on board, that's been three years, and so I know the town manager is constantly looking at ways to reorganize. So that's the budget in a nutshell. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you wanted to, I always like to say, too, if you want to go through the spreadsheet and really go through the revenue estimates, I would be happy to do that as well.
Any overall questions for Ms. Petit, Mr. Patterson?
Jennifer, do we have a targeted level for our reserve and stabil- Jennifer, do we have a targeted level for our reserve and stabilization funding?
Yes, we do.
Sometimes I worry that we're like a dog track rabbit, you know, we're always chasing something that they always keep pushing out a little bit further on us.
Yeah, it's a really good question. We do. It's about 5% of the budget. So as the budget increases, when you think about funding the general stabilization fund, we've been level funding that for the last few years at 440. And the percentage of that, of the way the budget increases, we are reaching our goal. I believe we'd probably be at our goal for the general stabilization would be in the next two or three years.
Do you anticipate any overruns in the spring?
No.
I have a couple of questions on the OPEB. Are the money set that we deposit into those accounts or trusts, are they revocable or irrevocable?
That's a good question. I know that if, when you put the money aside, it isn't a trust fund, and means that you can invest that a little differently than you would your general fund cash. You know, you can invest it for the longer term. I'm not sure if it's irrevocable. I usually always, it is a really good question. If you ever wanted to go to that, what you could do, and this has been suggested, so I would say probably not irrevocable when I think about it, is you could probably put your health insurance in there, your health insurance in your budget, and then you would vote your health insurance out, you know, to fund that every year. And you could fund that for the longer term.
The reason I asked is that I had heard a year or so ago that the state was considering creating some kind of a trust for OPEB where all communities could participate in it if they wanted to, but it would be irrevocable.
Oh.
So if a community put their money in that state trust, you could never get it back out. It could only be used for the purpose for which it was created. But I know a lot of communities decided not to do that because they needed more flexibility. And so that's why I asked.
I always, you know, with my, the experience and, you know, just sitting through many town meetings, if town meeting voted in, there's no reason why town meeting can't vote it out. And that's, I've always felt that way. But, you know, OPEB is a different animal in and of itself. And even though we don't have to fund it, I can get the answer to that question for you. I mean, it is a good question. I would probably, as I sit here and I talk and then I listen to you, I think that it would not be irrevocable.
I would think too, because each year, we're putting more and more money into that. And eventually, there's going to be a significant amount of dollars in that trust, I would think.
Yeah, and eventually, you'd be using that for health insurance, yes.
The other question I had on the abatements, are those in the overlay account?
Yes.
Is that where they are? That's why they don't have to be appropriated by town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other one was the water and sewer rates. I know that we haven't made any significant increases in those. But now that we are going to have a waste of water treatment plant and the wastewater facility, I wondered if we are moving any closer to maybe creating enterprise accounts for those two departments?
Yeah, another really good question, actually. Sam had asked about that. A couple, probably about a year and a half ago, we voted $500,000 into a water stabilization fund to come up with some seed money in order to fund the water. I mean, I believe that's where we want to go. With the major project going on right now, I wouldn't, you know, upend it. But the real issue is that the water revenue supports the general fund to the tune of about $1 million. So if you pull the revenue out, so we want to be prepared for that. And so when you look at that, and you look at the water rate study and the water treatment plant, let's, you know, for the short term, we want to get through that and reevaluate it. And actually, the water and source study will really give us an insight into that. Once you pull that out and you put it into an enterprise fund, we really want to start looking at water main replacement. We want to make sure the rates are going to support that. When I presented a financing plan for the water treatment plant, it was about $46 million. When you looked at principal and interest, it was about 2.6 million a year for that project. And so as part of the financing plan, we're thinking maybe half, about 1.3, could be supported by water rates in order to keep the debts, you know, steady. But once we make all those, or you all make, you know, those determinations and feel comfortable of where it's going and where you want to go, we can actually look at it again, but we'll have to look at it in a little bit of a different light, just because so much has gone on in the last couple of years.
Could an enterprise fund actually fund debt, or can it only fund expenses?
No, it can fund debt. It would fund the water debt. It really, it's a separate business entity, and it would support all of that. What you want to make sure when you have an enterprise fund, you know, DOR looks at that separately. So if your rates aren't supporting the expenses, including debt, or even trying to put some money away, they won't certify your tax rate, and they make you go back and then revoke that. So you really want to make sure your rates support those expenses. And another concern, if you will, as I look at this, and I've been, you know, working with the finances, is really the water main replacement that needs to, that we really need to get on a plan. So we want to make sure as we incorporate more debt in addition to the water treatment plant, that the rates will definitely support that.
I just have one more comment.
I'm no expert, but I think you have an astonishing command of municipal finance, and we're very grateful you're here.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Another question from Mr. Teague. Do you have the spreadsheet on the slide?
I do. Do you want me to walk it, walk through it?
Well, I think we might actually walk through and have questions for you, as opposed to you. Would the board want to go through line item by line item, the budget?
I have one, Joe. Every general question.
Okay, general question first.
I know that the state legislature and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have been looking at Chapter 70 funds. And we've been getting some optimistic feedback from Massachusetts Municipal Association that they're likely to increase that, to cover things like the increase in health insurance costs for our school staff. If that goes up, because I know you've fun, you've basically anticipated that revenue source will stay the same into FY '17. If that does go up, are you planning to essentially credit that to the school department so they could use it for some of the deficiencies that they've identified?
Yep. Good question. It's actually in your budget policy as well, you know, if there's an increase. Usually, it's a year lag, though, because we don't find out about an increase until later in the year, and we've already voted the budget. But one other issue as well, and I have had a conversation, have had several conversations with the school department, but I had one recently to talk about where they are in the budget process. And I think they feel pretty, you know, hopeful where they are, you know, administration right now. One thing I will mention, though, that they will be talking about with the school budget, is as you, the last couple of years, they've needed a little bit more than what that 2.3% or the 2.29% that's in your budget policy. And it's something a lot of times that we work out with the finance committee. As you know, there's a subcommittee that goes to all the budget committee meetings for the school department. And so we had Upper Cape Tech, their budget went down and it decreased. And what we did, because it was for education, we funneled some of that money for the school department. So this year, that budget's going up. We have more students. So it went down for a while, and now it's going up. So we will, the town will, we didn't take it out of the 2.3%, you know, we will take that in. But there was an increase in Chapter 70. I think it was about $60,000. But we're going to keep it at the 2.3% because we took care of the 120 increase in health insurance. And I have talked to the subcommittees about that, and everybody seems to be good with that. So I just wanted to mention it. But it's something that we look at. Couple of years ago, we received, I think it was $325,000 from Chapter 70, and we funneled that. We had actually a local aid resolution early in the year, so we were able to funnel that money to the school. So we always pay attention to that, you know. And if there's a need, we work it out. I know that there might be some cut in kindergarten funding this year. And I've spoken to Patrick Murphy about that. But that's something that we will, we will work it out through the process as we get more information.
Well, I just wanted to say, in looking at over, and particularly reading Mr. Suso's budget message, I think two things really stand out a lot in this budget. And one is the trash and recycling pickup. I mean, the huge increase that we have for this year. And I know Becky has been one who has occasionally brought up the fact that maybe this is something that we can't continue to afford to do. I mean, $645,000 increase in one year is really pretty hefty to try to absorb. And the other one, of course, is health insurance. And that is going to be just a huge issue this year and I think in the years to come. And I know that Falmouth is part of the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, which may or may not, may be changing at some point in time, I'm not sure. But the costs are really, they're almost prohibitive in a sense. I mean, they really are huge. So I think those are two things that we have to be very aware of this coming year and see how we can do whatever we can to kind of get more control on those.
I think there's also some initiatives with the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group that they're looking at to do things maybe a little differently. I know that you've had conversations with Cape Cod Healthcare, you know, and things of that nature to try to see if we could do things more efficiently, if you will.
There are conversations. We don't know whether those will materialize with Cape Cod Healthcare. There's over 20,000 subscribers in the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. We're one of the very largest groups of consumers of Cape Cod Healthcare. So we're hopeful that they'll look at that group as a place where they can see both efficiency and service for them and possibly some cost savings for the town. But all that will result in a need for collective bargaining. And there are 57 municipal groups in that group. The group chose to defer plan changes this year in expectations for plan design changes that are much more significant next year. So be prepared to be involved in that very challenging collective bargaining environment. And while you have to have a notice to employees, we'll have an insurance advisory committee and follow through the procedures to make some plan design changes to make sure that the cost sharing of insurance can, remains constant between the employer and the employee. So that's something that we will see in the future. That will result in reductions in premium expenses, both on the town side and on the subscriber side. And that will help for another three years. But that's something, that correction is something that has to happen on a very routine basis. And there really is no concern on my end at looking at alternatives. But those alternatives also open up challenges that, other challenges.
Thank you.
Yep, Ms. Wren?
In terms of contingencies, I noticed there was a workers' comp line. And is there anywhere, maybe I just didn't pick it up, a liability contingency, for example, with the turbine litigations? Is there, how will that be handled if it becomes a financial cost to the town?
The turbines?
Mm-hmm.
The litigation.
Well, we've been paying for the litigation from the special counsel budget. Yeah, you did not, yes, you did, from hearing the question correctly. There was not an increase in the operating budget for that line item. I think we're still funding it at like $125,000. We will continue to look at that in November and April. With the trash contract and all the other pressures on the budget, it was hard to increase that. You know, hopefully the wind turbine litigation won't go on forever. And the other litigation too, you have a lot of labor council in that budget. But we've been able to fund it, you know, outside the budget because it does change every year. And it's hard to say that because I know the last two years, it's been so high. So it's like, why don't we really make a dent? And we probably should, but we didn't in this budget, just because of all the other pressures.
What operating system are we using for the turbines in this budget? Are we operating under it, wind one being shut down, or wind one and wind two being run 12 hours?
Okay, so really, in the operating budget, what you're looking at is the energy receipts supporting the debt service, okay? That's really the pressure on the operating budget, is paying that debt service. It's about $400,000 a year. We have money in the energy reserve account for two years of debt service, probably a little bit more now that we appropriated $200,000 at the last town meeting. So I didn't, you know, have to take anything out of the general fund revenues in order to support that debt service. That's the reoccurring expense, putting that. But the litigation, we look at one-time expense, but it has been reoccurring over the last few years.
I guess I have a few questions on line items from the department, not on revenue but on expenses.
Okay.
And if we could get that slide up there just so...
Sure. So you want the departmental spreadsheet up there?
That's what I would like to do.
Okay.
Is quickly going through these line items by line items?
I have a couple of questions myself.
And there's some that were answered in the book, but I think it'd be good to have the answers sent to the public also.
Just bear with me one second.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can make a comment or two while, again, while Jennifer's preparing for that. Just as a reminder, process-wise, as represented by our colleagues that are here tonight from the various departments, this operating budget process started five to six months ago. So it's a very long and it's a very challenging process. And I appreciate the steadfast work of my colleagues that has put the town really in a position in following the lead in the budget policy set by the Board of Selectmen to live within our means, to make available to us the kind of maintenance of services that we continue to enjoy because of wise choices being made and informed choices being made. And also, as a reminder, the process is, we'll be presenting, of course, the FY '17 budget here tonight, as we are in the midst of that. We'll have it on your agenda the following Monday, January 11th, for consideration for action by the board. Because as per the charter, as you will recall, this budget needs to be transmitted to the finance committee so they can undertake their important work beginning in the middle part of January. So that is sort of the process going forward. This is the presentation. There's an opportunity for continued discussion as well. So I want to do affirm that. Thank you.
And so to start off on the line item, the third one down, on the Selectman administration, that increase of 25, $15,000 of that is the money for funding, or at least partial funding of the fireworks. And that actually is something that we can decide whether we, that is part of our budget, and do we want to do that.
Well, I think this came up because the committee, the fireworks committee, has been, it's been very difficult for them to raise enough money to do the fireworks. And each year, some of you probably get postcards from the committee, I know I get them every year, to please donate. And, but each year, the costs go up. I remember when they were $30,000, and now they're something like $80,000 or more. It could be more than that a year. And so it came to the point where the committee was just working, they were working so hard just to raise money that they couldn't do a lot of other things. So they came to the town and said, are we interested? Either that, or we don't do them anymore, or we have some other modified, smaller type of celebration on 4th of July. So this year, we took a shot at whether or not we would be able to fund a significant portion of the fireworks. So that's why it's there. But I think public input is very important. Do you want the fireworks? And if you really want them, then are you willing to pay for them through the, through taxes? Because otherwise, it may or may not happen. So it gave us a little, we put it in there to give us a little cushion time to be able to figure out what we can do going forward. Is it something we can do, we want to do, the public wants, then we can...
And there's a chance we can bribe Drudge Droulet to continue to work on this committee because of the contribution from the town.
That's right, exactly.
Any more years we can get out of his efforts, I think would be well-used.
What is the amount that we're asking for?
The town would be putting $15,000.
15?
Yep. And that's what, we're part of that $25,000 is coming from. The next one, Ms. Teague, if you could just go over the changes in the finance department, town treasurer and town collector. I think they come out as a wash.
Sure, absolutely.
But I think they're all related to a wash. Two of them are going down, and one's going up quite a bit.
Okay, great. Yes, well, I'm happy to report that we finally finished the reorganization, and we have our finance department all set, if you will. When I came here, I wanted to observe. It was a new consolidated finance department. So let me tell you how this budget reflects that. I had, I'll start with the finance department. There was a part-time position in my department, when I say my department, my department of one. It was to support the finance committee. I believe that it was put in there before I started just to make sure there'd be enough money to support some administrative work for the finance committee. So we have taken that, taken that out of the budget. And really, what the reorganization, part of the reorganization, we have combined the treasurer-collector's position. So we were able to take the treasurer's position out. But we did move some of that money into the expenses. It was about $30,000, still to bring in some consulting with the transition of that. For actually, you know, my years as a finance director has always been as the town accountant. So this was my first time as acting treasurer and really digging down into, you know, the details. And so I've had to use some consulting services. And we want to continue on that for the next year, just to make sure, especially with our new software. We went to a new software with the treasurer's office. So we moved some of that. But there's still a $40,000 savings in that department. And so what we did was, there was a position, it was the assistant assessor's position. We had promoted, Tricia Favouli. She was the assistant assessor, and we promoted her to the assessor. And we always had that position vacant. I really didn't take or decrease any of the, you know, the staff budgeting until I really wanted to figure out how I wanted it to work. So what we did was, and let me just explain this. About three years ago, there was a report done by our auditors if we were going to have a consolidated collector-treasurer department. And they wanted, you know, their recommendation was to have one more in the treasurer department. So what we did was, we changed the job description from Tricia's old, the assistant assessor's old job, and we combined that with the treasurer's office. And so they're working in the assessor's office assisting the assessor, and in the treasurer's office assisting the treasurer. So once we got that filled, I was able to reduce the treasurer-collector's amount, and then also take that position out of my department because I didn't really need that admin. I actually have the assistant to the town accountant helping me with a lot of this. You know, I do want to say a great thank you to Stacy Stokes. She works tirelessly to get these budget books done for me, and she's been a great resource in the accounting department. So that really just, you know, it's a long answer for one budget year, but it's been, you know, coming for a while over three budget years. over three budget years. So there is a savings there. And as you can see, we consolidated the Collector and the Treasurer.
Moving down the list, are there other questions people have? Yep. Mr. Patterson?
The Town Clerk. I know I had raised the possibility that we might have to have early voting offered in this town. It was a correspondence that I had received. And I know that's going to increase the cost for the Town Clerk. Has that been anticipated in this budget or not?
We see the next line item is the elections. I think that's...
Oh, okay.
Because of the national election, that we didn't have this year.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But I'm not sure if that's also taking account of the early voting.
That has not been anticipated in this budget, but I'm sure if we want to hear from Michael Palmer, maybe he can discuss that.
Okay.
Probably because we have the department that's here.
If we have questions with them, I'd love to have them feel that they were worthwhile coming here, so.
The state hasn't issued regulations on how that early voting is going to take place and what our requirements are going to be. They've been very, very careful on how they're wording it, as the town may choose to do this, rather than the cha- town will do this, which will be an unfunded mandate, which we're hoping for. And through the Clerks Association, Massachusetts Clerks Association pushed the Secretary of the Commonwealth and the State Auditors to do some funding of it, of early voting. It could require us setting up a polling place two weeks prior to the presidential election and staffing that. So there could be a substantial cost to that, which, which isn't included in here because we don't know what those regulations is going to be. And we don't know if state will fund some of that. So at this point, that's not in there. But it's something that we'll have to consider once we, once they come up with what we are going to be required to do.
Michael Wyatt there. I know that you and David Biera were working on automated voting machines possibly, or is any of that included in any of this number?
Yeah, the Rules Committee is going to, is going to bring that up. And there's a couple of different systems that are available. And I have done some research on that. And I believe we have a meeting on February, Tuesday, February second, in the Old Water Department at six o'clock. I'm advertising for that.
Good to publicize.
To allow people to, allow people to come and have some input into that. There are several different companies that have a form of electronic voting. And it's more or less a handheld device, like a remote control, where you can put one for yes and two for no, and accumulate the vote at town meeting, which would eliminate the uncertainty of account being accurate, you know, especially in close votes. That would eliminate that people scrutinizing those votes. There's a little bit of a cost to that, and whether we buy it or we lease it. There are some towns that I have implemented, I think Wolf Leedown, the Cape has. But the Rules Committee is going to be bringing that up and doing more research and coming up with the, the cost of what it is to buy those systems.
So relative to this budget, it's not included?
It's not in there. We'd like to have for the April town meeting, some kind of demonstration, where there would just be, not necessarily voting at town meeting, but, you know, what color do you like, blue or red? And just to get people an idea of what it's, what, how it would work. So that's, that's our goal, is to bring that up and then, then fund it at a, at a future date.
Thank you.
Any questions for Michael?
Just one question, Michael. Is there any additional charges with people voting absentee ballot and apparently doing so for the convenience of going and voting early? Is there an expense to that for the town?
Well, we, in the Clerk's Office, we absorb, is basically a labor cost of, we have mail, a mailing going out, but a labor cost of putting all those mailings together and then processing absentee ballots as they come in. A lot of people come into Town Hall and vote. So a lot of our, our function in the office, three weeks prior to election, is dealing with the absentee voting. Absentee voting, the difference between absentee voting and early voting is absentee voting, there's only three reasons. You're going to be out of town, you have a religious belief, or you have a disability that it doesn't allow you to go to the polling place on Election Day to vote by absentee ballot. Early voting, you would not have to have a reason. Now, I would say a lot of people vote absentee, and we say, you're not going to be here on Election Day. And they, and they say, no. And when I say, well, we're checking, and then they go, whoa, whoa, whoa. So I think a lot of people are voting absentee ballot, are voting right now, and are, just, just for the convenience of it. And, and I have mixed emotions about it because we want to encourage as many people to vote as possible. And if that's encouraging more people to vote, then that's what early voting is going to address. But so we kind of, you know, we will see no evil type when people say, are you going to be in town? And they say, no.
Thank you.
Any questions for Michael? Okay, moving on.
I'll skip to my next one, which I guess has to do with the combination of the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Consolidated Communications. First, we for the Police Department. We do notice that there, it's a decrease from last year to this year. And I think that's mostly with the effect of the Consolidated Dispatch. But it's also a significant reduction from what was requested. And maybe the Police Chief could at least defend the number that you were asking, or say that the number we're giving back to you will work for you, we hope.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe, as I reviewed it today, the, has to do with overtime reduction and salary reduction, which has to do with the Consolidated Dispatch. There were some increases having to do, that I did ask for, to do with drug investigations. So, and everything else was just level funded. So we'll make it work.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the Police Chief?
I might as well ask, because one of the aspects of the budget was Falmouth Heights, being able to have increased patrols at Falmouth Heights Beach in the summer. Is that included in your budget? Can you handle...
That, I believe I did get some additional money there also for summer patrol. And that's where that summer patrol officer go. Because going back, I date myself here, going back in the seventies and the eighties, we had four or five police officers up in Falmouth Heights. And recently, we haven't been able to staff Falmouth Heights. We staffed Main Street with, with summer patrol. We've staffed Woods Hole with summer patrol. And as you're aware, we, we have offices up at the Old Silver Beach because of the traffic. So Falmouth Heights is really a location that we've missed. We've had complaints of alcohol on the beaches that we're not addressing unless it's called into us. And we have parking issues around the ball field that need to be addressed and things like that. So this, there is money now for, for me to hire a summer officer up there.
So it's safe for us to go to the Falmouth Heights, Maravista Homeowners Association meeting in May?
Yes, it is.
Well, from a police point of view.
Yeah, from a police point of view.
Depends on how, what else we respond this spring to find out.
We've been to Piñatas for the past couple of years.
Okay, okay. Well, if this will help you a little bit, I'm glad it will help.
Thank you very much, Chief.
And I guess to reiterate with the Consolidated Dispatch, once that's finalized, that will free up three police officers to be used for however you choose.
That's correct. The offices that are assigned to the desk, we have three shifts, as everybody's aware. And there's an officer on the desk on each of those shifts. Those offices will either be assigned to the station, depending on the time of year, if we have a lot of walk-ins, or they're going to be assigned to the road. So yes, we'll have extra patrols on the streets.
Because I think one of the things that we're happy about that is I get, I believe that gets us to what you consider to be a full, we've filled all of our spots, and how close are we to being?
We, we, we fill the funded positions, that's correct. We're, we're at fifty-eight.
And what would you consider to be sixty-three, sixty-one?
We're still, we're still, we still have offices in training right now, some of our new ones. And they are going to be, the last three that graduate in October. And they're going to be, being released from their FTOs probably within the next two weeks. So they'll be integrated into the shifts. And they'll give me a much better idea as to the staffing on each shift. Because some, some shifts, we're still only running five cars, where with the proper staffing, we should have six to eight cars on the road. So once they're, once they're released from their training and integrated in the shift, I'll have a better idea in that, what that real number might be. Might be sixty-one or sixty-two compared to the sixty-six that we were in two thousand eight.
Okay, thank you.
And just quickly, a little bit aside from the budget, but isn't it this coming weekend, you have your major opioid?
Friday, Friday from, it's an all-day event up at the Seacrest. Yeah, we're having our opioid, our first opioid summit. And right now, I have, we have five working groups, and we have close to a hundred people that'll be attending that. And we'll see where we go from there. So it's really exciting to see what, what information and what, what we can gather and gain from that. And like I say, we have, when I spoke about doing this type of summit, really wanted the community involved. And we really do have the community involved in this. So we have politicians, we have doctors, dentists, pharmacists, the hospital, the schools, citizens. So it's going to be interesting to see what comes out of it and where we're going to go with it. It really is, I think, groundbreaking.
And, you know, I said it's a little bit aside from the budget, but there is such a great cost in a lot of different levels with the opioid and addiction issue. And I think this is pretty precedent-setting, especially on the Cape that you pulled this together. So I think, I just thought it was worth mentioning.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, Chief, I know, I've heard people say that we have, our detective work hasn't been getting done in a very expeditious way. With this additional staffing, is that problem going to get addressed? Or is that just, is that a rumor?
Well, no, our detectives are working. I mean, we, we are picking the, choosing the serious crimes. Again, back when the department was at sixty-six, we actually had, and that was back when I was a captain in detectives, in charge of that division, I actually had seven detectives working in there. So we could investigate vandalisms. Just because they, they needed something to do, you assign them a vandalism. I'm not going to say vandalisms aren't important and shouldn't be investigated. They should. But we have to prioritize. And what we're, what we're prioritizing on are very serious crimes, bodily injury crimes right now. Our patrol officers are doing the best that they can do with handling patrol calls and doing some follow-ups on their own on those smaller crimes. Once we get the people, once I get the shifts in place as to what I have for manpower on the shifts, then I will decide whether or not I can put more people back in detectives. Because again, I can only take from patrol. And if I take from patrol, you can't respond to calls. So, you know, a prime example, today, we had, we had a serious head-on accident on one fifty-one. Fortunately, we had enough people working today. We had eight cruisers at that accident scene because we had to shut the road down. So, you know, I had people there today. One, one of the programs, just to give you real quick, one of the programs I am going to re-initiate once these people back on the, on patrol on their own, is doing a rotating detective like I had done before, taking somebody from patrol and rotating them through. So they'll give an extra hand in there that they can handle some of those small calls.
Thank you.
Ms. Moffitt?
I'd like to talk about the Quinn bill. And I see it's about a half million dollars. Is that, is, are, are patrolmen, all of them that want to access the money that's in the Quinn bill, are they able to do that with that amount of money?
What, what we did, or what the town did, I can say, is back when the issues of the Quinn bill came out, there's only a handful of offices still receiving what you would consider Quinn bill money.
Okay.
That was done through negotiations. And there are offices that now get stipends of, of money. And it's set, it's a set fee. It isn't like with, with, with Quinn, where it was percentages. Currently, right now, if you have an associate's degree, it's so much. You have a bachelor's degree, it's so much. And it's fixed figures. And any offices coming in now with an education are getting paid for their educations.
Okay, but we don't have, excuse me?
Let's pay for the part of the town, not by the state.
Correct.
Yes.
The town took that up.
Quinn is gone.
Okay. I just wanted to know if there were policemen who wanted to access that and weren't able to.
Officers that were in the Quinn, actually, and how it was settled with the town through negotiation, was officers that were in what you consider Quinn are still getting their Quinn money, but is paid for through the town.
Okay.
And then any other education, officers, new officers coming in, these new officers, if they have degrees, there is a set fee for them. So in reality, the town does save money because as officers retire, and tho- those, those are the offices that are receiving Quinn, because those are the offices that have been here the longest. As they retire, that goes away.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject, pardon me, Selectman Flynn?
Just to, just to clarify further, for anyone who might be listening that maybe doesn't understand, the state is the one that determined that the Quinn bill would die, and that Quinn benefits were going away. And Falmouth is one of the communities that stepped up through collective bargaining, working with the chief and others in the other leadership in the department and elsewhere, to ensure that really, the concept is an educational benefit. In other words, recognizing and rewarding those police officers that are committed to continuing education, to furthering their careers, to enhancing their value as police officers. Because obviously, as the chief is very well aware, the most effective police officer is a highly trained police officer. And most of the really challenging work gets done with one's head and not with one, with force or physical means. And that's really where education comes in, continuing education and training. And the chief, of course, holds that in very high regard. So we're very pleased that the town's educational incentive benefits continue, as the chief has indicated, even with the newly hired officers. And coming at a time when sadly, the state walked away from the Quinn bill and left all of us and municipalities standing and holding the bag and having a very, very difficult time, Commonwealth-wise. We understand the reason for that, of course. It was the, in part, the national economic recession. But it was a lesson learned, another lesson learned, for municipalities like Falmouth, that if it's important enough to do, we need to find a way to do it ourselves. And that's exactly, as the chief syndicated, what we've been able to do. We're funding educational incentive benefits internally. We're doing it in a slightly different way. But we're continuing to encourage police officers to enhance their education, their training, and rewarding it with this educational incentive pay. And we're very pleased that we can do that. And it's critically important going forward in maintaining the kind of professional department that the chief represents and all the men and women in the department. So we're delighted that we can do that. And while I'm on that note, if I may also, Mr. Chairman, I want to pass on an additional congratulation and recognition to Chief Dunn for his leadership. Selectman Moran has already commented on that, in terms of this opiate, opiate task force and the forum and the first of two major meetings in the summit, which begins on Friday. Really, Chief Dunn began to talk to me about that many, many months ago, before frankly, it came into fashion in the Commonwealth to begin talking about it. And he, he didn't talk about it, standing on a mountaintop and shouting, but he began quietly to work on that behind the scenes. And it's, it's really a, in recognition of his quiet leadership, not only here in the town of Falmouth, but frankly, in, in the Commonwealth. And I think that's, I know that's being recognized by his counterparts chiefs throughout the Commonwealth, as he is increasingly being asked to assume leadership positions in the Executive Board of the, of the chiefs in the Commonwealth. But I do want to, I do want to applaud the chief for that leadership. We, this challenge has no easy answers. But with the chief's initiative, we're bringing together all the right people to talk about it, to get our arms around it, and to begin to address it, rather than waiting for someone else to do so. I think that's, you know, another example of the lesson we've learned, that if there are solutions to challenges in the community, it's not about arresting our way out of challenges, but it's about thinking creatively, working cooperatively and collaboratively, and doing it in an informed way with the enormous resources that we have here in the town of Falmouth. And we look forward to that leadership continuing to expand. So thank you for the opportunity to comment upon that and its impact in many other areas.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess I would turn to Chief Sullivan, if he could also kind of have the same sort of comment, that the request was not funded the same amount. Part of that, again, is because of the Consolidated Dispatch. And I think if you look at the three line items of the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Consolidated Dispatch, you'll see that there still is a net gain, or increase in cost, because some of the things that were being requested by the Police Department and Fire Department are being funded at an additional amount than they were in previous years.
You're correct, sir. We have two hundred and fourteen thousand, it was zeroed out. There was our salary and wages for our dispatch personnel. And that will go towards the Consolidated Dispatch. And also, there's a forty thousand dollars cut also from overtime, which I think will be going towards that also.
And then the request that you put forward, this does include this new?
Fired, firefighter starting in January first?
Yes, under the salary and wages line item, as of January, though.
And there wouldn't be anything about new fire engines in this budget, because that would be coming in our, in the capital November budget, right?
The following town meeting, yes. Which we would like to see one in that one.
We'll be prepared for that. Other questions for the Police, for the Fire Chief?
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment, if I may? I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and recognize Chief Sullivan sadly retiring after many, many years of dedicated service and leadership to the Fire Department. after many, many years of dedicated service and leadership to the Fire Department. And I, as town manager, am sorry to see him go. It's been a pleasure and an honor and a delight working with him during my time here as town manager and Mark Sullivan as chief. And, you know, he's another individual who has quietly gotten the job done behind the scenes. He's also our emergency operations director, as the board is well aware. And that's a position that's been tested on many occasions in the past year, particularly this past winter, but that was only one, one example of those challenges that go forward. So, I'm very appreciative of the chief's many contributions, and, you know, his leadership will be missed. We appreciate it very much and look forward to our paths continuing to cross in additional capacities. And also, I want to note, speaking of fire trucks, I want to acknowledge and thank the chief and his executive staff for their tireless work in securing a replacement fire engine for the West Falmouth Fire Station. That's an item we've been talking about with the board earlier, back, going back to November, also in town meeting. Because of the situation that we experienced, as we're all aware, with the failure to secure passage on inspection for the fire engine that had been in the West Falmouth Station, and as the chief has advised me recently, we're within a couple of weeks of having that engine ready to go into service at that location. And we found an excellent vehicle, again, due to the chief's tireless work and that of his colleagues rolling up their sleeves and finding a very cost-effective solution to a challenging situation that gets us by in the short run. In the long run, obviously, the answer is to timely be replacing fire engines and other pieces of critical equipment. But this was a real test of our resolve to come up with a cost-effective resolution on behalf of taxpayers. And a twenty thousand dollar price tag compared to a half-million-dollar-plus price tag is a pretty good indication of the way, the effectiveness of rolling up the sleeves and coming up with an engine that I know I viewed, and the chief has viewed on multiple occasions, and what's one that we're very proud of to put into service here in a couple of weeks. So, again, I thank you, chief, for your leadership in that area as well.
I think not only the cost savings, but also the speed with which it could happen.
Correct.
Because if we actually were going for a new fire engine, it would be about a year and a half to actually necessarily get that into a fire station.
Particularly a custom engine, correct.
I have, I know you will have retired by the next town meeting, so just in case we can't convince you to get there, I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of the town and the Board of Selectmen to express our appreciation and for your many years of service. And I really very much appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment, I'd like to appreciate town manager Suso and the board for the support of the department over these years. And we do appreciate the support that we get to try and provide the service to the town that we've been doing. And we just hope that, we appreciate getting the extra firefighter slot this year coming around, and we think staffing is something that we hope you would keep in mind in the future for staffing and the combining of the North and West Falmouth Stations should be a priority. I think in the next priority after the, maybe the senior center's complete, maybe as a municipal project, that would be a great goal to see the town accomplish. But thank you very much for the kind words and all the support.
Thank you. Nice job.
Moving on our budget. Any other questions moving down? I think solid waste, we've already discussed about the fact that we have a new contract for solid waste. Both wastewater and water utilities, we're aware that those are big projects moving forward, and there is a possibility that some of that will be recouped by increasing the fees. Mr. Patterson?
I have a question on the Parks Department.
Okay.
If I could. I know I've received a lot of complaints about the condition of the fields over the last three or four years, that they've not been able to recover because of overuse. And I know it wasn't like that fifteen or twenty years ago. I see there is an increase here, and I've already asked Jennifer on the side just whether that increase is going to address any of that issue, but I would at least like the public to know that there's a recognition that the town's fields, both the schools and all of the recreational fields that are used by youth and adults, are being looked at in terms of trying to improve the maintenance so that they, we don't have as many ankle injuries and that sort of thing as a result of rough conditions.
Mr. Chairman, could we make one comment on that to Selectman Patterson?
Just briefly, I'm not sure if Rocky and Helen are here, but you may recall-
Helen's here.
At the last town meeting, the CPC endorsed a field use and demand study that will take both a look at condition and demand for fields to help us determine what the community's goals are in terms of the condition of the fields. It's clear that Falmouth does have fields that are in a lower class than many other communities. That's been, I believe, a choice of the town. And if we want to increase the condition and quality of fields, that will be a strategic investment that we'll have to take a look at and understand what that means. And so, we've asked the CPC to help with funding that. I don't know if Helen has any comments, but that is a joint effort on part of the Parks Department and the Recreation Committee.
I'd just like to comment also that the Recreation Department received fifty thousand dollars as part of our capital last year, and Rocky and his guys have started to work using that money to upgrade Trotting Park Field, which is, has been ranked as one of our worst fields in town. So, hopefully, by next spring, that'll be much improved.
Just one, just, of course, that the amount of play that those fields get really is astounding by all age groups. There's a lot of adult groups that use those fields. They really don't get the rest that they need, and that's part of the challenge, that even with additional investment, we need to look at how we're going to use the fields that we have.
Ms. Moffett?
Just going back to number, well, Upper Cape Regional, right below the School Department.
Yep.
Is there anyone here from the school? I just am interested in how many students that were paying two-point-one million dollars to go to the Upper Cape?
I don't have the number, the total number of students, but we're looking at an increase of probably four to five students this coming year. That would be the increase. And it's all calculated on the Chapter Seventy formula, so it's not really a per-student fee. It's calculated with this calculation of the Chapter Seventy, and it takes into account property valuations and things of that nature. But I don't have the total number of students that go to Upper Cape, but I could get that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And my understanding is that if we had no students, we would still be paying a fairly significant base fee. And so, that's the reason why you can't take this number and divide it by the number of students.
True.
Say that's the per-student cost. There's a base fee we have to pay, and then it's additional per student beyond that. Any other questions? Page two. I think the increase in veteran services has already been discussed about the insurance and the liability for veterans.
I have a question on the Medicare tax. Is that the Cadillac tax? Or no? That's been postponed, has it not?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about that as well. The Medicare taxes, the Medicare portion, as you know, town employees aren't subject to Social Security, the six-and-a-half percent, but they are subject to, post nineteen eighty-six, they are subject to Medicare tax, which is one-point-four-five percent, and then the town matches that. And so, the reason why it goes up every year is because people are retiring pre-nineteen eighty-six. So, that's the Medicare tax in the budget. The Cadillac tax is a calculation, it's a part of the Affordable Care Act, and it's a calculation on what our premiums are. Well, they have a base that they have for the federal government, what our premiums are, plus the employee premiums, and anything over the threshold from the federal government, it's forty percent. And that was going to go into effect in two thousand and eighteen, and we were in the process of trying to calculate that. They have put that off to two thousand and twenty. So, that gives us a little bit more time to look at costs. But I do want to say, too, that we still have, through the investment with the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund, there's still about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand in that fund that can help start to fund this when that does come into play.
I just had a question on the library fund, as to whether we have a small increase as to whether that's going to be allowed to extend the hours at all for the library? And if not, how much more money could we give you to get some more hours, or how could we help?
We are not able to extend the hours with the small increase. The increase is usually, is taken up by salaries, by an increase in our materials budget, which is determined by a percentage of our total expenditures and by our increase in our CLMS membership. We did expand library hours in the branches last year, and they were very much appreciated by the people.
Any questions for the library? Ms. Moffett?
Do you have a number of, or a number of what it would cost to have the library open?
I have a number for Sunday hours. We're in the midst of doing a, doing, well, we just completed focus groups. We're doing a survey on strategic planning for the library. And the most requested change in the library is for Sunday hours. And Sunday hours, in the past, we were open forty weeks out of the year on Sundays, not in the summer, but just in the winter. And we estimate that it costs about a thousand dollars a day, forty, did I say forty weeks or forty hours? Forty weeks in the year. And it costs about a thousand dollars a day for us to minimally man the library during the hours of one to four, I think, is what we usually do.
Twenty thousand dollars a year.
And we could open Sundays.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Other items?
Oh. Excuse me.
Sure.
I was looking for the one. In unemployment, it went from the one forty-five to the one seventy. Why did it go back to the one forty-five?
One seventy was requested, and we level-funded it at one forty-five. I mean, we're looking at a projection, you know, now, we don't know how much will be tapped in in FY seventeen, so I didn't want to put more money into it. We will see. We're not looking at any staff cuts or things of that nature, so I just wanted to level fund it.
And unemployment most often comes up when we do cut positions.
Most often, yeah. A lot of it, really, of unemployment is the School Department.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments from department heads who wish we hadn't asked them a question? I always feel a little frustrated with this meeting because us not having questions for you means that you may have been here without getting to answer a question, but it often means that the work has already been done behind the scenes, and we appreciate how much time and effort has gone into a budget that I think we feel very comfortable with being able to move forward in. And so, I hope you don't feel slighted that you weren't picked out to ask a question of. But it is tremendous how much, if anyone else ever wants to read through the budget book and see how much preparation has gone into this by the Finance Committee, by the department heads, by the members of the departments, to get these numbers in a way that makes sense to us and is a good hefty vacation time meeting. But it gives us a chance to prepare and actually, I think, ask some good questions. Ms. Moffett?
I just want to back that up, because I will say that each, each time I have gone through this, it goes through my mind how many people have worked on these numbers. And these are very small spaces. And so, you're looking at two or three years, and then you go back, and then you try to compare it, and then you want to see, is it over the two-point-five that, that's what we have to work with? But I think of the people who have spent hours to get this put together and then to present it to the town, and then to, to have Jennifer explain it as if she were speaking to us in a language that sometimes I don't understand her. But I am, I am just in awe of all of the town employees that were involved, and I just say thank you to all of them.
And I also reiterate that what happens now is that this budget then goes to the Finance Committee, who is a group of volunteers who then will look over this, again, with a, I'd say a finer tooth comb, but with a different pair of eyes to then really vetting each dollar figure and making sure that they're, that they're go-to-town meeting with the numbers that make sense. Okay, any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.